I'd like to call for the zoning board meeting. I don't think we need to stand and flag again, do you? A little redundant. So, we're here for petition one, which is determine the completeness of application, consider waivers, which is a special use permit filed by Bruce Bryant with mailing address of 93 Arcadia Road, Oak Valley, Rhode Island, 02832, for property owned by Bruce Bryant located at 1127 Main Street, Oak Valley, Rhode Island, 02832, identified as assessors plat 28, lot 142. It's in an RFR 80 zone and filed in accordance with sections 8C and 10 of chapter 134, the zoning ordinance of the town of Hopkien, as amended. Applicant is present. So, tonight, Bruce, we're going to read through a checklist, a pre-app checklist, just to make sure we have everything that we need to have a hearing next month on July 15th. If we have any questions, we'll throw them at you. So, we're going to do a lot of talking and see if we have everything we need. No, not on a pre-app. Usually it's attached, sorry, we're looking for a checklist. You don't want to read it, just take it out. There is things to go through here. Section A, three copies of the site prepared. Prepared by and signed, stamped by a professional engineer. Professional land surveyor, it scales no less than one inch or 40 feet, fully showing. Name and address of the property or date, north arrow, rapid scale, lot dimensions and area. Flat and lot, zoning districts and setbacks. Existing and proposed structures and their relationship and distance from lot boundary. Existing and proposed parking areas and walkways. Existing and proposed landscaping as it relates to the request. Existing street 911 address, allowance and stuff. List of names and addresses of all property owners within 200 feet. And last, any peculiar site conditions? I make a motion to check this item A is complete. Any discussion? All favor? Checklist item B, three copies of a separate map indicating all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property and/or all those property owners and entities with required notice. Yeah, a list of them. We need a map that shows all the wanting property.
Yeah, so in 200 feet, it's like a radius that goes around the property. No, no, you got the names, normally the radius is a captain assessment map. It shows a 200-foot arc around the whole piece of property and all these names that you have, this list, which is probably, you know, inclusive. It kind of correlates with the map.
Where did you come up with this list of names? Did Terry do that? Okay, then I'm sure he has the map because that's the only way he would have came up with these. Because they look, it looks pretty close, but we can't verify.
We don't have an assessment map, Andy, do we? Just grab a scale out of the truck. A separate map, at least, which will be had all the names.
Yes, Bruce, this is more what we need, here's like a copy. Yeah. That's, that's up to the board what they would. You want to look at it and verify it that way. Let's put that in front of Dan, because he's going to get a scale. Yeah, I don't want to do it without him.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we're still, we're still running Dan's grabbing a scale. Sorry.
I just wanted to confirm that I'm actually an active member on this. Is that right, or?
Yes, yes, tonight, Ronnie had a conflict, so Chip, you're a part of this one.
Yep.
Yep. Let's go to the copy here. Now, now we have, we all. She throws a nice basketball right down the middle. All right, now we're back on track. Map 28, lot 122, it's SM Trombino Properties. Well, this one here, no? Should be, that's the soil field by them. That's not the right map.
There's the drive.
Yeah. Oh, you did 42, it's not 142. Fastball, fastball was following. Okay, hang on, we're going to go on another brief pause for a second. Yes.
Yep.
All right, so what do you got? So now, you need this. So we have map 28, lot 122, just SM Trombino Properties. So we have map 28, lot 139, James Tep. Then we're going to go map 28, 142, which is the subject. Map 28, lot 136, Anchor Storage, that's the big one. Map 28, lot 140, Dale and Catherine Rogers. 28, 143, Naryance Electric, that's across the street. 28, 138, that's David McDougall. 28, 141, Benjamin. In the shot hall, that's one. And then 28, 144 is Carol Athletic. All right, so the one, you have to, we have to include the town of Richmond, which that's, there's multiple properties there, if you look at this map. That's more than Freddie Singletary's property. This potentially could be Ralph Woodman C, and then also across the street. No, over here, I can't think of her name. Well, she used to be the preschool. Yes. So on that, over on that Richmond side, I know Fred has the old garage building, but that radius potentially could include Ralph's stuff. Might not. I don't know how that back corner Ralph's stuff, if it comes around or anything, so you want to look at that, but it's definitely Fred, and then, I can't remember her name, forgive me, but the Galloway. You've got to go 200 feet into Richmond with that also, so if you look over here, all this space, this is all Richmond, so if there's a couple lots, you're going to, no, well, really, it's just going to notify the town. Just tell the town, yes.
Certified letter to the town council.
Yeah, yeah, so they do need to be notified. So that's where I was getting at, is notify those individuals plus the town of Richmond. Certified letter, the same as all your neighbors, right? You can talk to Sherry or Tony about how to draft that letter. Then we'll need the receipts, the green card receipts before the next meeting. You can get them, they usually go to you, Liz, or Sherry?
They go to me.
You, so when you get the receipts, you can give them to Liz or bring them to the meetings. And if somebody doesn't pick one up, just bring in, it'll just be a return envelope, right? Bring that back so that we at least know that you threatened to contact them.
Everybody on your list, in Hopkien, that you gave us, that was, and then you're going to hit like three or four that are originally that fall on that 200-foot radius.
Why, that one's not accurate?
Well, no, because it says Gloria and.
Catherine and Dale Rogers.
It's not on this, on this map. On the one I gave you that.
You're checking on. Oh, on your, on your site plan?
Yeah.
It's not on here either.
Yeah, that doesn't matter so much on that, it's kind of redundant, because we have the list. We have the list, we have the map, Liz got you the map you needed.
On your survey plans, now it formally, so it might have been a prior owner. What's most important is the town dropped the accessory map.
Yes, this, this, what we have here, this is. Yeah, we needed, we needed this, you have it. We can make copies of this, we're going to put one in, in the clerk's file as well, but you can take that one as yours. And then if Mr. Bryant wants one for his records, we can make him one. But update that list of the people in Richmond and the town of Richmond, don't just do that. Make sure you add the town to the certified letters. Yeah, everybody, yeah, you got to do them all. So, that's checklist.
That's the three, that's his own map, so.
So B is not complete at this point, so we would make that subject to receipt by the.
The zone clerk.
By the hearing.
Right, as long as he gets that into.
Yeah.
I think he needs to amend the, the butters list and include that as a package.
All right, so checklist item B, we can't deem it complete, so as Mr. Rudy said, we want you to amend the butters list, so add those people in Richmond to that list. Bring that with you for the hearing, or submit it to the clerk before the hearing, so we have it. And then get the certified letter receipts back to the clerk before the hearing. So we're going to move on to checklist item C, because we can't.
Where did that map go? Do you have that map still? Don't you give a damn. Do you have that map?
Make a motion to deem the checklist item six.
Item B.
Item B. Needs to be amended prior to the public hearing, with the updated butters list and the Richmond properties.
Discussion? Chip, you good?
I'm good.
You found one all this time?
Stuffing with you guys.
All right, so we have, we've got a motion, second. Discussion's over, all favor?
Aye, aye.
Chip's aye, okay, thank you.
Item C is a soil erosion or stormwater control plan with supporting calculations based on standards approved by USDA Soil Conservation Services. I believe there's a request for waiver on item checklist M2. Second. Well, you say there's nothing being added, Dan, he's added three structures plus a trailer.
They're there.
They've been there.
This is, the purpose of the hearing is to basically bring them into compliance for a special use permit, but he's not like disturbing the land, they're physically already there.
They're physically already there, but there are also new structures that were never, there was never.
What do you want to ask him for?
What's that?
What do you want to ask him for relative?
No, I'm just, I'm just the comment that they were already there, the, I mean, part of the reason why they, they're here is because those, those three boxes and the trailer were not conformance, they weren't, there wasn't a building permit or anything pulled for. They were, they were dropped in a residential zone.
My, my point is that if you're proposing construction or something, you're adding something, and you're disturbing the soil, then you need an erosion control plan. This is there, it's been there for a couple years, the ground is all mitigated, in my opinion. If you don't agree, it's fine.
No, that's, no, I understand, you elaborated on it, so it's, it's, it's on the surface, no ground was disturbed in place.
The mudslide wouldn't happen a couple of years ago, that I can't speak to, but if you, if you're looking for drainage couts, then that's fine, make that, go for it. He's asked for a waiver, I, to me, it seems like a reasonable request.
All right, no, I'm just, I'm concerned there's wetlands behind it.
Yeah.
There's wetlands way away from it along the river, this thing's surrounded by wetlands on two sides. Structures are in place, whether they're a trailer or not.
Right, but once a, once a site is mitigated, the erosion control gets taken down. So what would you propose?
That's, you elaborated, that's fine, that's fine, that's what I'm trying to follow. That it's already existing and it's there, but these structures shouldn't necessarily have been put in.
Well, I'm not, that wasn't my statement.
Okay, no, that's all right.
You asked for a waiver, if someone disagrees, that's fine.
Now, do you make a distinction between erosion control measures versus runoff? From the existing, okay, I get that.
That's fine, all right, so you got a motion?
Can I just, sorry, just wanted to jump in here. You mentioned, I don't actually have the map in front of me, so as long as, so I understand that they're already there, so any soil change must have happened already, presumably. But I just wanted to make sure that there would, the structures are not inside of wetland buffers or anything like that, are they, as long as they're, are they all outside of that?
We don't know. He doesn't seem to have a 50-foot, if it has a 50-foot setback with that forested wetland, because it does not seem to have that on his plan, Chip.
And the reason that I bring that up, I mean, that, you know, certainly as a town, we should be concerned about that, but if they are within a 50-foot wetland, they could be opening themselves up to DEM violations on that.
So, so on that site plan, Dan, you understand this better than probably all of us, there's a building setback perimeter. Yep, what is that for?
That's for the zoning.
All right, so that's the town setbacks.
It's an RFR 80, so it'd be 60 foot off the road.
Okay.
40 side and 50.
All right, that's the town setback.
Yeah, I think that's what it says.
That's not a wetland anywhere? It says building.
Well, there's a forest wetland back here.
Right.
Count to a 93, we'll go next to that, he's got a forest of wetland. And it would appear that might be 150 foot of wetland, so it's a good point in Chip's part, which is going to be addressed in the next items.
All right, yeah, all right, so I think I'm probably merging this item and the next item together, and I understand your point, that's why I got clarification, so. So we have a motion on that, and second to waive.
Do you want to have, excuse me one second, I do want to have that as one item. I'm assuming he's asking for a waiver on D as well.
D, F, G, and H.
Where do the wetlands come up, Joe, when do we ask for that?
That's D.
It's D, yes.
Yeah.
So, even though they're separate items, they kind of, long Chip's point of thinking is that they're kind of one of the same.
Well, to me, item C is your control during construction, that's the template.
Yeah.
No more control. And D is what happens permanently on the site.
Yeah, I, that's, I admit, I think, I think C is separate than the my issue, I apologize for jumping ahead on that.
I think I was too, Chip, that's a. All right, so back to, back to C, the stormwater control plan. You got a motion, you got a second? We've had discussion, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Chip, okay, so C is waived. So now we move to D. Checklist item D is a letter from a biologist indicating there are no freshwater wetlands on or in proximity of the site such that the application is regulated by Ryland Freshwater Wetlands Act. In those instances where the application is regulated by the Ryland Freshwater Wetlands Act, a physical alteration permit issued by the Ryland Department of Environmental Management, and where applicable, the US Army Corps of Engineers shall be required.
That's where we were.
So, I mean, I think with this, with the proximity of the wetlands, I mean, we don't, we don't even know where the wetland buffers are.
Well, that's different than, it's, I mean, in that circumstance, that would be different than flood, I would imagine. You know, this is the type of thing, it's dicey now, right, because these structures have already been there, but you know, from the town, if they're, if they're within, if they're within 50 feet of a wetlands, that, you know, that is, as far as I know, from what I'm familiar with the wetlands regulations, is that, that could, that could open them up to DEM penalties, and I think as a town, I don't think, I don't think we can knowingly, you know, waive something like that, so, but, so I think the issue would be the best bet would be for the applicant to try to get to, to have that boundary determined, and then potentially, because, and then I would assume they would have to ask DEM for a waiver themselves, not necessarily, we can't, it doesn't seem like it's our authority to waive that.
I mean, I don't disagree with you at all, Chip, either, I mean, we, there's no way of us knowing where the wetland is. I mean, we can measure things, but we don't know where DM's going to put that that buffer line.
They may say, just for the applicant's point of view, is that, you know, they may acknowledge, okay, yes, you, you are within that buffer, but because it's existing, and it, and I've heard this before, that they just say it's minimal or negligible impact, so no big deal. Especially because it's already existing, so I don't want to necessarily scare the applicant away by having to go this route, but I think it's the appropriate route, just so that the town itself and the applicant are protected, you know, from violating this regulation.
I don't think we have any responsibility to be concerned about condoning the violation of DEM regs. That's not for us to determine, number one, number two, we have no power to enforce. That's between the applicant and DEM. I agree with Chip to the extent that it would be, we would be hard pressed to support a waiver without some evidence to support that, that we, that we can get through this. But not because we're an extension of the EM.
No, I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that that's what, that's our role here. I just, and I, I'm just not sure if, you know, when we know that a rule exists, I'm not sure it's good practice for the town to approve something that may or may not be in violation of that rule.
I mean, why, why isn't that checklist item in there? I mean, why, why isn't that checklist item in there?
Because if it doesn't meet the compliance standards, the, any permit granted may be voided.
Correct.
Say that one more time.
So if, if you don't comply with the state regs and you're supposed to, you have, it's supposed to comply with the state regs, no matter what the town says. The town's grant of a special use permit might be voided. I mean, whether or not there's an appeal taken by the butter is a different story. DEM can basically, so you violated this and whether, I don't know if it could strike down here, your permit, but they could basically make it null and void by ordering them to get that stuff off the property. Well, it looks like at minimum, probably what it would be is to have a wetland delineated and a letter from a biologist. If that wetland is less than, say, an acre in size and not contiguous with the river, then maybe there's no setback, but we don't know that. Basically, the information we have, it could be contiguous and might not be.
Man, it looks pretty obvious. He's going to need an insignificant alteration permit.
Well, I mean, if we think of this with other applications, we just said that one, one check on the proximity to the pond. We require a biologist letter. I mean, it's, it's, it's common practice for us to do this. We know that there's wetlands on the property. So it's normal for us to get that letter to reassure us and the applicant to do the right thing. So I, I agree with, with Chip. I mean, and that, that's the reason why that checklist item is in there. So I would entertain a motion that we, we do need the biologist letter. Like that before the hearing.
You follow that, Bruce?
No, I gotta call the DM.
No, you're gonna have to call either through Terry Rhodes, who did the survey and work for you, and he's gonna have the biologist he works with, and they're gonna have to flag it. Then he's gonna have to go out and field locate it and put it to paper. The question is, it just, it looks to me like he's encapsulated the areas to the north as a forest of wetland.
Well, he did the one for Stano, so.
Oh, is that right?
So it was all flagged, so he sort of.
Yeah. Got you. And then, then if that's the case, then you're gonna have to find out. The letter alone is not going to work.
Right.
It might be a permit from DEM or either a PD preliminary determination or a letter of non-jurisdiction, which is highly unlikely, but one of those. A letter of non-jurisdiction, that they would not be having jurisdiction, but more than likely, you know, proximity to the, the wetland, to what you've got in the way of structures. It'll probably be PD preliminary determination. But more than likely, this land, based on the contours you have there, from a hundred down to ninety-three, this was disturbed 50, 100 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Listen, I think the state actually built it a lot.
Yeah.
That land, they built ninety-five.
Unfortunately, it does, you know, force it, you know, across that hurdle. Wow.
Better years.
Not permanent structure.
That's, that's the hearing we can discuss.
We're setting some parameters. I'm just suggesting here that if they're not permanent, permanent structures, wouldn't say no plot. Like, for instance, he's proposing to put a, bring in a trailer. Says a 40-foot trailer. It doesn't delineate on that map where he plans to put it. I assume he's going to propose certain areas on that property, because there's only certain areas he can probably get onto with a trail like that.
I really don't care about.
So those are better questions for Tony and Sherry. Sherry's on.
The only one I'm probably throwing around is. Because it's been there for like three years.
That's right along the back of sidewalk. Yeah, that one's only of the wetland, so.
Hi, good evening, folks.
Hi, Sherry.
Sherry Garden filling in for Tony tonight.
So I, I think Dan Barubi has a question.
I mean, I think it's up to the applicant. I mean, these are temporary structures and just consulting with, with the solicitor briefly, and I think, I think he gets it. You know, is there going to be a different set of rules that apply to these and those setbacks? I think it's up to the applicant to bring forth something or evidence to support an argument that suggests that he might be entitled to a different set of parameters for consideration.
Sherry, how does the town look at the, the storage boxes? Is, are they temporary structures? Are they just structures? How, what? How do we look at them?
As of right now, we are viewing them as structures similar to a shed. And I'm sure you all have seen that they, they're popping up all over town, but because of the commercial look of them, going forward in the zoning rewrite that's coming up, we're proposing that these structures be not allowed in any front yards, basically in the backyards and be screened properly or sited to, to look more residential in nature. And I understand that this use with Bruce is not a residential use. So we, we would leave that at this point right now at the discretion of the board. Having no specific, you know, the, the, the question that's come up, it's, yeah, it's a storage container similar to a shed. That's how we look at them. They're placed on top of the ground. There's no disturbance to the grounds when you place these units there. But we are looking to, to somewhat regulate those from a town perspective going forward.
So, so let me ask this. If, if someone would put a shed on their property, would they fall under the same wetlands setbacks?
Absolutely.
Would they fall under the same building setbacks as a normal, any, any other property? It really doesn't matter what zone it is.
Yes, unless, unless it was smaller than eight by eight, smaller than 64 square feet, in which case it doesn't require even a building permit.
And that wouldn't matter if it had a foundation, if it was on blocks, if it was on the ground?
That comes down to code with those things. State building code states that anything over 199 square feet requires a, a foundation. You can go up to 199 square feet and, and have something on blocks, but you still require two ground anchors at opposing corners to prevent overturn in a windstorm. Those units being made of the materials that they're made of, I, I don't foresee, you know, anything happening with those as far as wind issues. But we still, as I said, we're, we're still looking at them as structures.
All right. So as far as this, I mean, we've dealt with this before, constituted structure. It, it can be a shed. It can be an underground pool. You're saying it can be these boxes. I mean, it can be, a structure is, is a multitude of things.
Why, why don't you also want to know what DEM considers a structure for the purposes of?
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have my zoning book in front of me, but if somebody has a zoning book there, there is, I believe that there is a definition for structure in the definition section.
Yeah, I remember that fact. Pair of a good point too, is what DEM also defines a structure as, or if they do, would these fall under?
I'm not sure DEM regulations necessarily, it's not about putting a structure in the wetland. It's about doing anything, any potential alteration in the wetland.
Altering, right.
So.
I guess that's my point. I mean, what are, what do they consider? Not, not something, something not acceptable.
I, I think, but I mean, Chip hit it on the head with, it's any disturbance.
Right.
So structure for our zoning ordinance is a combination of materials, the form of construction, a construction for use, occupancy or ornamentation, whether installed on, above or below the surface of land or water. So I mean, that, that's a lot of things. We ran into that back a few years ago, when someone, I don't know if it was a shed or if it was a pool. Trying to say that it wasn't a, a structure, which is, actually, I think it was. But it was, the structure is pretty much anything you put on, on the land. So, but I, I think we need the biologist. So did we ever take a vote on that? I don't, I think we had a motion. We did it for a motion. No, all right.
Basically, he asked for a waiver, but I ain't the waiver. Kind of stuff.
Right. So we, we would need that biologist out of the board. So we'd need a motion to.
Move checklist. I think it's one of the cab, it's not just the biologist's letter, but the, is it required DEM permit? That's biologist, that's got to give that guy.
Yeah, you don't have to go to the biologist and file this based on the outcome. That, that, that is, that's the game and probably don't need them to, you know, some, some DEM intervention.
When you, when you look at the checklist, I mean, the, so the, the item required for, for D is a letter from a biologist indicating that there are no, no, no freshwater wetlands. So I, I don't know. So in this case, if it happens to be within a wetland, I don't know. What's the alternative to that, I guess, for the, I'm not sure who would answer that question? You know, so, so if, if the applicant can't get a letter that says there are no wetlands, then is there another way? Like, what's their, what's their next course of action, I guess?
Permit from DEM.
Okay. So, but that's.
That, 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 that letter from the biologist essentially saves him that step. If it determines that, that, that his area, is the area that he's contemplating is outside the setback, then he's good.
Okay. I just, I just, from like, from a, a practice standpoint, like when I, when I'm, I, I happen to pull up this copy of the checklist as well. It, it just says, like, if I were looking at this as an applicant, I'd say, okay, is this completely out if I can't get that no freshwater letter? There's not a, either provide a letter that says there's no freshwater or provide a permit from D, you know, some sort of documentation for DEM. So I think whatever, we just, we should try to give the applicant that, as much information as we can in case they, in case a biologist cannot supply them with that letter.
Chip, I think that, that's the second half of the checklist item.
Okay.
That's the, that's the alternative direction from the head.
Oh, I see. Sorry.
Yeah, it's kind of like split on pages in a book. So you think you're done with it and then you have to look to the next side.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay. But Joe just brought that up. He's.
Mr. Bryant, do you understand what, what they're saying? What, essentially what the solicitor is saying to us is if we were to proceed without this benefit, then your permit, your special use permit would be called into question. So instead of you going through this entire process and thinking you get a positive resolution or an outcome to your request, they're simply saying that that checklist item has to be satisfied before the. If, if he does, then great. You're a step closer to it. But it has to go beyond that. He's got, essentially the biologist has got to tell us that you are operating outside of that setback, of the setback that's required by DEM.
Biologist, your plan, what you have proposed, it's all right, it doesn't mean it, and then you're gonna make that.
Well, your whole, lots of challenge. It's clear that, that you couldn't, there's nothing that you're doing today could be done today without some significant relief. I understand. We, we, we just don't want to put you through a process where you can put all the work into it and for one reason, you know, for an avoidable situation, it, it's called into question. So I think, I mean, I'll, I'll listen to the board, whatever you guys want to do, but I think we should stop right here, give him an opportunity to withdraw and then come back.
Well, I don't think stop here. I think he has more checklist waivers. I would rather give him a full waiver if he needs and bring all that rather than stop here and then come in and eat. I don't want to send it back out again. Let's go through, so, so D, we're not going to get past that hurdle. We didn't get past E, which that's an easy hurdle. C, we waived, so we have G and H. So let's just move beyond.
Excuse me one second. Okay. What was your reason for maybe withdrawing at this point?
Give him a chance to regroup, get back with his engineer, take a better look at this checklist and come, you know.
It seems to me if, if, if this is the biggest hurdle, and if we just cover the last three items, at least then we can have a, you know, ask for continuance. Clearly, we've been asked that many times.
No, you can, you can do that. I, I'd rather that we, if we're going to go through the waivers, let's, let's get through the other items so we don't send them short. Right?
Chip, you agree?
I, I agree with that. I mean, we should, we should work through this just so, to let him know if there's any other things that he's going to want to deal with, with coming back. So I, I think so.
So let's, so we're gonna, we know that D is deficient, B is deficient. So let's move on to E. You make a motion for D? I don't think so, because we can't, we can't.
Make a motion that item B is incomplete.
Yes.
Second, second. More discussion on that. Chip?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So D is incomplete. All right. Here's the item E, location of existing septic system where construction requires approval by RIDEM. Should have assumed it is noted on there, right? So that's that. So that's the locations. There is a septic, yeah. Does the, you have a septic? Do you have bathrooms?
No, but I got a septic.
All right.
It's about everything. I had to, that's the whole building.
Oh, was it in the, the brick building and the stone building in the center?
It goes in all bathrooms and the storage going up.
I make a motion, checklist item E is complete. Okay. No, I'm just thinking, it's just weird. You have, you have, there's no, there's no rest.
Well, there was one, but I, when the flooding, I had to take the whole building apart just to put the electric, the electric was in the basement. And when the river came, oh, yeah. You mean, the, the plumbing's all there. All I gotta do is.
So not, I'm not trying to be a team, but it's just, if you have, if. Well, yeah, if you have a business, you're required to have a bathroom. I, I mean, I understand.
All I gotta do is put it back on. It's all sitting here. But I had to knock all the walls down there. You know, they have the X, Y, or whatever, metal, right? I had to tear all that out because it was all in pieces in the wall. So I just had to knock every wall out to get all the electrical disconnected from the base. The panel is now upstairs.
And I think you, I mean, this is just my, I think your bathroom back in order. Well, no, I'm just, you have a business, you're required to have a bathroom and have a septic, but actually not have a bathroom? Doesn't make sense when you're running a business. And not that you have to run a million people through it, but you still. No, I know it's, but I don't, I don't know where that falls. When you have a business, you typically require.
You can put a toilet in.
A restroom?
Yeah.
Even for employees, and I mean, I know you're, you're an employee. It's just a weird, it's a weird situation.
It doesn't have to go to the public.
No, but you're still required to have a restroom. Oh, but.
So I got, listen, I got, my whole plan was to revamp that building until I realized you really can't do nothing besides of the flood bill. The only way you could do it is take the whole, this floor out of the stone building, just backfill the whole foundation with cement and then do drainage.
Sherry, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
So I, you can have a discussion on what, how? Where's the town at with, like, businesses and having a restroom? The, the property has a septic, but there's no restroom right now?
Yeah, that's, you know what? That's something I would have to look into as far as state building code to see what is required. And I can certainly do the research and, and get back to the board with that information. Because truthfully, I'm, I'm, I'm not really sure. And I, you know, if it's, if you have a structure there that, that you don't allow access to by the public, yeah, I, I'm truthfully not sure where it falls. I would have to check in with the. Yeah, I I'm truthfully not sure where it falls. I would have to check in with the with the state building code.
Sherry, this is Dan here. Do you item A says location of existing septic system where construction requires approval of R I D E M. An I S P S application provided, does this construction of a storage facilities require a septic design for this additional structures, the trailers?
Well, in this instance, that's where I think it's it's a little foggy because there's there was really no construction of anything. This was just placement of pre-existing structures. So it's it's still kind of a gray area.
In showing the existing location, we have that, but I I would my my point, if we're looking at this like strictly as the checklist, if the applicants provided the location of existing septic system, and I I guess I'm okay with that. I think I think, you know, it is like if we look at that item just in and of itself, they provided that. Okay. You know, I mean, other we may run into issues other places, but as far as providing that item.
Well, I mean, so if we look at the structures that he placed, the storage structures, they're not necessarily retail, so people aren't really in and of them. It's it's the employees going in it, not really store the page, it's the storage. So I don't really see the septic as an issue as far as those containers. And I mean, it's a totally, it's not what's on the board as far as. It's just that's I don't know. I don't know the answer. Like Sherry said, it's a gray area. But that's on the side. So I mean, I would think as far as we show the location that's there, I mean, the storage, I don't think he means it. It's not that it requires septic upgrade. Oh, you did.
I agree with Chip.
You'd never agree with me.
Wow.
But I agree with you, so therefore indirectly you agree.
They are. Chip, I think from my perspective, you're the nail on the head.
Yes, I made the motion. All right, Joe's got a motion on the second one. Any more discussion? No, we can vote on these. So then he has he has specific listed where his deficient was different. Okay.
Yeah, well, let's see.
All right, so motion on the floor. Any more discussion on E? All favor.
I.
All right, checklist item F, traffic study addressing the potential impacts of the proposed activity. Hey, gonna be driving down the street. I don't I'm there's enough driveway and everything on that property. I don't think that I don't think traffic dates are an issue.
These these containers aren't necessarily intended to allow more customers or anything, right? Are they just storage or?
Um, well, it's it's storage for he's got hay and grain.
And they've and they've already they've been there already. Are there any current complaints about traffic associated with that?
Not with traffic.
It's fine with me, Ben.
I would I would just go on analogy to patches. Enhance his his operation, being required to have a traffic study for that.
Yeah, great.
Please ask a for a waiver. No, not on that one. We brought a good point. If we did allow this in the expansion, some point it's going to come in.
I would suggest that any further expansion from here would require traffic.
Yeah, that's what we said for patches, right?
Right.
And that's easy.
Yeah, I think we're down.
I make a motion except the waiver.
Second.
A second.
All right, just a second. Any more discussion? All favor.
I. Chip, I.
I like how we talked in the third person.
Yeah.
You like the rock. Rock always referred to himself as the rock.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they died it up just.
Oh, I know. I know what you're doing. Thank you.
Be very passive aggressive, Chip. Don't worry about it.
Checklist item G on a separate site plane indicating existing proposed topography at two foot into this. I would entertain motion that it's complete. So we'll my second. Any discussion on that one? All favor.
I. I.
Final item is this item H, provide evidence that the proposed water supply has sufficient supply to support the proposed activity and is a drinking water quality.
They want cow water? I got cow water. I mean, I don't.
But yeah, so. So the so the activity, the activity with the with the storage boxes, does it expand your water usage?
No.
Make a motion to grant the waiver for H. Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
I. I.
Okay, so we so we can't deem it complete checklist item B. We need to amend the butters list to the town of Richmond and those neighboring properties.
So problem obviously, it's very loud and whatever whatever falls on point.
And then again, those have to go off certified, return the receipts, the a wonderful clerk here.
That's not going to happen. Thirty days that you can have a well.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So you might be off the docket for next July, just if because you're not going to you're not going to get scheduled that quick. Just ask for an extension.
Needs to come back and we need to go through this. And then he can notice.
Okay, well, yeah, that probably makes more sense.
I would like to see everything before we you know, say go out to.
I I actually, that's a better the path. So rather than roll into it here in short, let's get that stuff come back. We'll just. No, you don't do that yet. Just once, once we, once we convene the checklist.
Okay.
We're gonna we're gonna do another meeting. We're gonna follow up with with B and D, right?
Everything you need to be.
Then like Dan Harrington said, so D is gonna might take a few months to get. Right? At that point, when you get that stuff in hand, notify us, notify Sherry, Tony, and we'll get you on the docket for the upcoming meeting. Could be August, could be September. And then we'll we'll finish up the free app and then following month after that, we'll we'll schedule here. So I mean, we might be out until.
I don't send letters to my neighbor here.
Not yet. No, no.
So I'm concentrating on just on D then.
No, no.
You gotta focus on B as well. We need that updated list.
Yeah. Just, yeah, so just.
That was pre-acted other than Richmond.
Yep, just add Richmond and the town of Richmond. Yeah, to the list. And then once, once all these checklist items are complete, the next time you can come in with the biologist info, then we're going to send you out and tell you to get the certified letters. Then that following will have it will have it in.
That's one more thing. Um, you you'd indicated that you were kind of indifferent as to the mobile trailer. I would only ask that if you are going to continue to request the mobile trail, which is fine.
Yeah.
That this map reflects an area or areas that you plan to park that trailer because it's not denoted here now. So that would those areas would have to be also contemplated in anything that you're required to do with. So if you want to abandon that request, that's fine. If you want to continue with that request, it would have to be on this map. Wherever wherever you're going to put it.
Then just make the top, which would be right by the road. I don't know.
That's entirely up to you. I'm not suggesting one way or the other. I'm suggesting to you that if you plan on doing that, it would be helpful for me to know where you plan to put it so that we can consider it because you're going to need some relief for the setbacks.
Oh, definitely. The only way they could go.
Okay.
And you know how close it works to the road. Now, let me ask you, how does it work? Like that one wasn't registered for the what? Or when I used to have a guy come in, drop the trailer, sell it, then come to pick it up, get moving. What's that considered? That's still considered.
That's the that's the zoning official makes that determination, you know, unregistered versus unregistered trailers.
So I think he's saying temporary. You're hiring. What are you hiring? You're you're paying somebody to deliver a trailer that they own. They leave it temporarily, then they pull it off.
Really not affirmative.
We have like an all street parking ordinance, don't we? We had that when we deal with lots and stuff, trailers and things parked overnight. See, that stuff, that's not allowable in residential zones. Yeah, that's the problem. You're in a residential zone and those trailers being in a residential zone, it's it's but it's an R F R eighty.
It's a rural farmer, yeah.
Yeah.
So he's kind of also a so he's got used by right.
What use?
That that agricultural use has been in existence for hours.
Forty-five, forty-three years.
It's using conjunction with.
Trailer itself.
Trailers using conjunction with this is right. What are you storing in there?
Agriculture stuff.
Well, like what for instance?
I had mine in there. I had fertilizer in there, one, the grain stuff to sell.
And is this stuff coming from the people that own the trailer?
No, well, sometimes some of it didn't, some of it did. I thought you had hay and.
I did. I did. I also had pro mix, you know. I mean, I think the problem I have now is we're treading on the wars here in this discussion. So there's a lot of discussion going on that we shouldn't be having. So I know, sorry, but I mean, these are questions that we made. Um, and that's that's not what. And I might be. We've had some hearings last as long. Well, let's say at my age, you know, I'm not going to be on the mic as long. Yeah. So I mean, I don't, I think we've done what we can tonight. So those those things that are deficient on that B B and D, we got to get them to us and then.
Well, I gotta get D. I just did the vice list.
No. Then we'll take we'll take that, finish up the free app later and then then we can move on to the hearing day. Right?
Right.
Okay. Right, I became a reschedule a date.
Is there some done by town?
He's following up with Sherry and Tony where you all with the use and the structures aren't according to town zoning that he has to apply for special use, which he has.
Is he under an N O V?
I don't know.
Are you under an N O V? Notice violation? Sherry?
Yes. Is yes, he did receive a notice of violation back in November of twenty twenty. And it was followed by court summons recently in which he went before the judge. And the he was asked to remove the the storage containers or apply for a special use permit for expansion of non-conforming. So this is where he's at.
So he's in accordance with his agreement with the court, to best your knowledge.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. That's fine.
I mean, I we need a motion. I think we're just.
Because you're basically you're going to certify the application are complete or it's not complete. So you can kick it down the road to a to a date certain, which I think is probably the best idea that when it stays on the record, keep going, so you're not losing track of it. Time's not falling to the fact. If you're concerned, it's going to take some time, which push one to two, I would think August.
Yes, we're looking at August nineteenth. Well, let's put August nineteenth. If we have to continue it to this September one, we will.
But I think it's important that that you make some progress.
Oh, yeah.
I I mean, I I have the sense that Sherry's office has probably been dealing with for a while. If it's been going on for a while, we should we should add some sense of urgency to get it resolved.
All right, so I'm entertaining a motion to deem to deem that this application is incomplete. I'm going to continue this pre-app meeting to the August nineteenth meeting. I think that's the next two two months away. At which point, if the applicant's ready, we'll move forward. Would be the pre-app meeting. If not, we'll we'll continue. We'll take it as such. So some more. Second, any discussion on that? Chip, you good?
Good.
Okay, all on all favor.
I. I.
All right, so right now, August nineteen, we'll just keep Sherry and Tony informed the way you're at. If you can make it, then good. If not, we'll we'll kick you down another. We have to. That's it. That's it for that. Clean up some housework in. All stuff. This hasn't taken over to or not.
No, I don't know. I just forward.
Change my table. Change your one. You got to put me in this now. I know. All right, so let's uh let's do these minutes while I make a motion. We accept the meeting minutes from people twenty second meeting. That was, let's see what's. Ronnie was not against, so everybody else. Yeah, so this was hearing for Patsy's. I think that was Kay Hill's. We got rid of that. That's that's mainly Patsy's. That's what that one was doing. Get a second. All right, any discussion on that on the minutes? All favor.
I. I.
If we have to hear anything more.
Not that I know. No, that's when you.
Sherry.
Zach or an addition on.
Sherry, did you hear anything else further from K L on their application?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not. I can reach out to them.
No, no, not necessarily. I was just curious if they reached out.
No, no, not necessarily. I was just curious if they reached out.
Nope, I have not heard anything.
That's staying in.
It's a mileage.
Do we have anything else?
Well, I want to just not discuss, but, uh, paying to, uh, the kennel we heard several months ago, uh, where you wrote, that's the Bill of Power. Crossed, which.
Yeah.
I just bumped into Joe, actually, went to work up there and said the kennel, the great neighbors, good neighbors. It's kind of nice to see when. It kind of works out for, you know, for a second.
That would, yeah, that was a very small scale.
Was, John, but never know.
No, you don't, yeah, you know. It's nice, it's nice. What's that true to the word too? It's nice to.
He knows a lot.
Yeah, I know. We hear some, yeah, a lot of problems. Is there anybody there that left that needs to say anything? Mr. Moreau's still there.
Well, Sherry here, just, just gonna say good night, folks, and, and thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Have a good night.
All right, we'll talk to you soon. Bye-bye.
Mr. Moreau, are you still there? No.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau.
Okay, no, I just, I just wanted to acknowledge you were still there, so, um, we're about ready to wrap up. We just wanted to let you know that if you had anything to, to say, we can give you a couple, a couple of minutes.
No, again, I just, you know, sometimes people take for granted what, uh, these boards and commissions are really like and what people do when they volunteer their time. You know, it's easy to sit back and criticize when you don't understand, you know, the time away from your families and all the pre-work, uh, prior to a meeting. So I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that. And, um, I'm just concerned a little bit, uh, about the delays with this Frontier Road project. Um, that was, you know, another comment I thought about, but other than that, uh, I had some concerns about that project, and I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it, um, with the attorney not being present, but I can say one thing. What I had recommended to the town council was that in a new P S E S that they have a defined work schedule, and I think what they're gonna go with is Monday through Friday, uh, eight to five with no weekend work at all. Yeah, I was at Maxon Hill, you know, um, during the week at six. So that's, that's basically it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's stuff that we would, we would discuss, um, during, um, if, if it was on, on point. So, um, we'll, we'll leave that for a night when, when all parties are here, not, uh, not now, but the, the board does appreciate the, uh, acknowledgement of all the time that we put in. And, uh, people, I think people forget that we're, we're, we're volunteers. We are appointed, but we're not elected. We don't get paid, and, uh, there are a lot of hours that go in on some of these hearings. I know, um, Dan and, Dan and I have been here for a while. We've put in some doozies and, um, Joe and, Joe and Dan have had them, done some, but we've had some whoppers over the last twenty years or so. And, but, but thank you, thank you for acknowledging, appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. And again, keep up the great work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
You're welcome.
You've, uh, that, anything else you guys want to discuss?
I, I found the email, I found your answer to the email that I sent with the draft Sherman and Mo Valley decision, but I find the actual email I sent.
But that just needs to be signed by me. I can come in during the week and do that.
All right.
Yeah, you can find it when you get back to your office tomorrow.
She said we'll do it on the.
All right. Yes, I'm not going. Um. Yeah. Just, you can let me know when you get it, and I'll, I'll make a point.
At one point, um, the previous, uh, study.
Yes. Acknowledge that.
I will find this out forward.
Okay. Do that, and I can print them on.
I think, uh, there's a recall of feedback.
Yeah, God help. Let me see. Um. All right, I'm paying a motion.
So we'll.
Hi, any more discussion?
I just had a quick question. Aren't we supposed to ratify those two things or am I, did I miss that?
No, we don't really need a motion or anything on that. That's just.
Oh, okay.
That's more just me signing them.
Okay, no problem.
Um. If you want me to say I ratify, am I doing?
No, I'm fine with the juror. I just want to make sure that.
No, that's fine. No, that's good, good follow. Um, so any, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned.